Good evening, and welcome to the February 26, 2018, meeting of the Marquette City Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, could we please have the roll call?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Plord. Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Stogel?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Campana?
Here. Commissioner Plord is not here. Do we have a motion to excuse, and with the reason? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that we excuse Commissioner Plord as he is on vacation, not at town.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? That passes six-zero. We will now move to the approval of the agenda. The agenda's in front of you. Would someone care to make a motion? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that the agenda be approved as presented.
Commissioner Frazier?
I would say it.
All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? That also carries six-zero. Announcements? I do not have any tonight. Now we come to Boards and Committees. Tonight, we're going to welcome ten new members to various boards. I would like to start with the first, the top four on our list. I will read them, and if you could meet me over at this podium. Anunshada Sarrioli to the Bronfield Redevelopment Authority. Candace Summer Blackstone Larson to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. Tara Gluski? Gluski, thank you. Is that you?
Yeah.
Thank you. Tara's on the Presque Isle Park Advisory Committee. And Paul Schumacher to the Housing Commission. Okay, we're happy tonight to welcome these individuals as they come forward to help advise the city on different matters, and, you know, without their help, their volunteering, they are what make Marquette a better place. So, we appreciate them stepping up, a few hours a month, but their input's going to be very appreciated. We would like to present you with the Marquette pin. Signifies you, when you wear it, that you are a volunteer for the city, and, again, we appreciate everything you've done, you have, are going to be doing for us. We have Anunshada Sarrioli to the Bronfield Redevelopment. One step over here, because the camera will get you. Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. And we have Candace Summer Blackstone. What was the last one? Larson.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have Tara, and I forget it.
Gluski.
Gluski.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Paul Schumacher, who's going to be on the Housing Commission. Give you this one. Paul, sir. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You bet. Okay, next, we have six individuals who are going to be working on the Parks and Rec Master Plan Ad Hoc Steering Committee. If I could call you, and if you would please come up here, please. We have Carly Sandstrom. Therese Hamery. Carly, come on over here. Slide over. Nathan Kaiser. Lynette Van Welzeners. Walt Lindelaar.
Uh, Walt just texted me, he had an unexpected emergency and is unable to get here.
Okay. We see him a lot, anyways. Michelle Cook. Okay, again, we thank you people for doing this. Again, we couldn't run the city without your help. You always come, you, your input is valued, and we appreciate you doing this, and you helped make Marquette a better place. So first, we have Carly. Thank you, Carly. And we have Therese Hamery.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Nathan.
Thank you very much.
And we have Lynn.
Thank you.
And we have Michelle. Michelle, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. There it is. Thank you. Next, we move to the first public comment of the evening. Public comment is when citizens can address the commission if they have something to tell us, or they can reserve time to speak on one of our business items that's upcoming. I'm going to open public comment. If you wish to address us, you've got three minutes. If you would take the podium in front, we need name and home address. Does anybody wish to address the commission at this point? Paul, if you could come to the front here? Give us name and home address, please.
Paul Schumacher, H-65 Preserve Drive, Marquette, Michigan. I just wanted to say something, since I'm here today, I lived in a house over on the west side of Marquette for three years, and every year, I shoveled the snow and kept clear of the sidewalks and everything. But when the snow started to melt, I started seeing what was left. And what was left, and this is West Crescent Street going up the hill to the cemetery, there had to be a minimum of 10,000 cigarette butts. And that was on one block. Now, when you look throughout Marquette as the snow melts, and I don't know if it's because people throw them off on Seventh Street there, throw them out of her car, but, I mean, there, there literally was 10,000. I walked down the street, and as I walked, everywhere along the street, there were just a phenomenal amount of cigarette butts. And as we all know, you know, there's been problems with people say the beach, you know, and the way the drains run down from the streets down to the beach, and then the cigarette butts end up in the lake. I've never seen any TV station or anybody have any concern, except for, well, Third Street does have those little buckets that they try to get people to use during the summertime. But I just, I don't know if the city can do anything. I don't know if there's committees, or if there's, you know, littering or something, but there is a phenomenal amount of cigarette butts in this town, in the streets, in the spring. So if something somehow can be started with some sort of campaign or something to try and retrain people to throw away cigarette butts instead of throwing them out in the streets, I think it would be a good thing for Marquette. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else? Would anyone else care to address us? Seeing none, we're going to close pu-- yes, go ahead, please.
Hello. I'm Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic, Marquette, Michigan. I'm requesting during the commissioner's comment phase that the following issues be addressed. One sentence will do. I'm hoping for more. First thing is the status of the rebuild on Picnic Rocks. In about six weeks, the snow will melt, and people will start wanting to crawl over those rocks. The second is the status of the endorsement by the city of Marquette of the reopening of the Empire Mine. And the third is I'd like to reserve time during the consent agenda to speak about items five F and five G. Everybody get that? Again, I'm at--
Wait, five F and what?
Five G.
No. My question to the city attorney, she wants to speak on the consent agenda. We don't really speak to that.
I don't see why she can't.
You want to do it?
Yeah.
Okay. We will do that.
Same three-minute rule, right?
We have never--
Oh, I beg your pardon. I, I was expecting to get three minutes for the consent agenda, too.
You will have it.
Thank you.
You'll have it.
And again, I'm, I'm not asking for a PowerPoint presentation. I'd just like an update, please. Thank you.
Three minutes. Yeah. Do we have anyone else? Anyone else that wished to address the commission? Anyone? Seeing none, I will now close public comment. We are going to move to the presentations portion of this meeting. We have two presentations tonight. Our first presentation is the Marquette Area Sister Cities Partnership Trip to Higashiomi, Japan. Bill Brazier will lead us on this. Bill?
Good evening. I'm Bill Brazier. I'm on the Marquette Area Sister Cities Partnership. And this last fall, we had eleven area delegates, mostly from the city of Marquette, from our area, go to our sister city in Higashiomi, Japan, for their biannual year, or biannual visit. Now, just like past years, we're in our 38th year, this was our 38th visit. Just in past years, the premise of this visit was to continue the vision that Price Duffield and Paulette Lindenberg carried out since the program began in '79, of the cultural understanding, the international friendship, and sharing of ideas. Also, what made this visit special is we rejuvenated an educational relationship between Marquette Area Public Schools and the school district in Higashiomi. This community has been so supportive of our sister city program, both with Kanyani and with Higashiomi. And we are going to be embarking on our, or having our 39th year, excuse me, coming up, and then Paulette Lindenberg will be going over on our 40th year in two years. So the history is there. This community has always given open arms to the visits, and they did so over there. They made our delegates and myself feel more than welcome. One of the, one of the highlights of the trip is we had, one of our delegates, Leslie Ho, Leslie Hoag, rather, was able to share special moments with the mayor over there because her grandfather, Ken Hoag, was one of the original delegates who ever went to Japan in 1979 as the opening delegation member and delegation visit. Also, I want to mention, the Michigan-Shiga relationship is in its 50th year this year, and there'll be a historic visit this fall, and we'll have a delegation coming over to Marquette from Higashiomi with hopefully no more than 10 delegates in hopefully the early fall. And we're hoping to get them in September to have a educational theme to it. So, put that out there. We're always looking for good host families commissioners, so that would be great. There was a gift given to me to give to the mayor, to the city of Marquette, and I'd like to present that, if there's time. And this is a gift to the city of Marquette from the city of Higashiomi, and this represents the Month of the Girl, which is coming up in two days, Month of March.
Oh, very good, very good.
Sure, please.
And you've got to get us to dates when they're going to come in here.
Yeah. When we know, Paulette and I will keep you posted.
We don't have any little kids in the audience, so we'll have to rip this out.
And there'll be a press release for the incoming delegation, so area residents know they can apply for being a host family as well.
Now, this is, what is something, the Year of the Girl?
Month of the Girl.
Month of the Girl.
Yep. And then May is Month of the Boy, so March is Month of the Girl.
Will it be appropriate?
Oh, yeah, of course. I believe it's ceramic.
It's always been nice. They, they do a nice job. And we sent stuff over, too. It's written in Japanese.
Mr. Mayor, he should let us know what it says, now.
I could fake it, you know. Okay. We're going to open this. Keep that. Actually, there's an English translation. Oh, yeah. We'll see. Actually, more people.
Historically commemorate, yeah, we go way back to like the 17th century.
Which, no, they're, they're a long time ago.
A long time ago. Okay. Figurines are very nicely done, well, made, painted, and they're historic.
And they're made in the city of Higashiomi. They're made by a local, local artist.
We'll probably put this in the library, because we do have other displays there.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Good. One more.
So our citizens from Marquette were over there for 11 days, and the city of Higashiomi, and the host families went beyond, would you believe, in hosting us.
They're always treated well. I've heard this, you know.
And we had a lot of delegates who said it was life-changing for them, so fantastic trip.
Yeah. So someone out there thinking of going--
Please do.
Well worth it?
It's well worth.
You can talk to any of these people that have gone, and they highly recommend it. So, keep it alive. Worthwhile experience.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we come to our second presentation of the evening. It's going to be by the Planning Commission update. We have Vice Chair Taylor Clip here. Taylor, if you would enlighten us, please.
I bring you the gift of a PowerPoint presentation. Let's see if this turns on. That's the next arrow. Yeah, this is how this usually works. Got it on. That's just us. There we go. Neat. Okay, so I think we've used this photo for four years in a row. We've definitely used this photo even longer. City Planning Board was established in 1947 pursuant to a public act. We are actually starting to not look like those guys in the Planning Commission. We're a little bit younger, there's some women, some tattoos. Let's see here. Prior to this time, you know, everything was pretty uncoordinated. Our, our responsibilities, development of the update of the city master plan, we did that relatively recently. Review of proposals, street and utility projects, whenever anybody builds something, they go through us. And then, of course, to adopt the codes and the regulations that they have to, with which they have to comply. And then making recommendations on zoning matters, things like short-term rentals, chickens, all that sort of stuff that we've already talked about and will talk about again. Planning Commission also has the review authority over the six-year capital outlay budget, so once a year, we kind of look at roads, we say, hey, here's the roads we think that should be fixed, and then you guys say, we don't have enough money to do all that, and you figure out the roads that actually do get fixed. Who we currently have, so Aaron, I am no longer the chairman, so that's nice. So Aaron Andres has been with us for a long time. He is currently getting his, geez, I think his public service masters? MPA at Northern. Joey Cardillo is an architect. She actually is the member that, she kind of thinks in city blocks, so she helps us kind of visualize what we're talking about. Bridget Jacola is new. She has five to 10 years of experience with the Esconaba Planning Commission. She really knows her stuff. Michael Larson is an energy guy. He's been with us for a while. Sarah Mittelfelt is also new. She is a professor at NMU, understands energy uses, understands placemaking, understands conservation very well. Wayne Primo is our history book, and also, as we get kind of pushed forward in the, you know, the winds of progress, Wayne is kind of a, like an undersized anchor for our boat. He kind of slows us down a little bit, which is a, which is actually really our job with you guys. So it's a, it's an important job. And then Tony's new, and he also had a ton of experience with the Esconaba Planning Commission, so we have just, I mean, it was Gladstone, but we've got a good crew going right now. One member resigned, one moved out of the city limits, and one is sitting right there. And we hope to have more people move up. Not me, but other people. Stuff we did was this, 10 site plans, site plan reviews, which is actually pretty thin for us for a year, conditional use permit requests. It was actually a strange year. You look at the city, and there's a lot of development going on, but the small development, which is kind of where we sit and do a lot of our day-to-day work, there wasn't a whole ton of it. We did a lot of debating on long-term planning. The code, short-term rentals, was a big one. Twenty-three meetings, one special meeting conducted to kick off a major project. Thirty-two point two hours. It seems like the decimal point's in the wrong place there. The average meeting was 97 minutes, which also seems short. No attendance problems during the year. You know, you, you nod off every once in a while, but everybody was sitting in chairs. Average attendance in the meetings was six members, we're actually up to nine. We have a, pretty close to a full, full group right now. And one regular meeting was canceled due to lack of business. Nobody remembers when that one was. Major accomplishments, we actually assisted staff in kicking off the Land Development Code. This is probably the biggest project that a planning commission can go through. We just finished the master plan rewrite. Land Development Code is not as fun or as interesting, and the, the master plan is kind of big picture. Here's large maps of the city, and we get to talk about, let's make the city walkable, and let's, let's kind of show us our dreams and every, you know, the dream of what the city could be and what it could look like, and the goals. The Land Development Code isn't really the goal, it's the, it's the rules. And it's dense, it's pretty painful. Staff is ripping through it as well as they can, and they're keeping us out of the picture as much as they can. But we're, we're getting closer to having a Land Development Code that's going to match the city a little better, eliminate variances like we talked about earlier, make it a little bit easier to start business, run business in the city, and try and steer the city a little more towards what we see happening. The city's very different than it was even 10 years ago. The Land Development Code, where it's going to change, you know, ordinance, signs, fences, setbacks, how close your home can be, how big a lot has to be. I think one thing we didn't talk about earlier was the old hospital. Are we just going to film like zombie movies there? What are we going to do with this? One, one idea that I think holds a lot of water would be, let's have small lots. Let's see if we can put in some brownstones, just a really nice kind of dense neighborhood look. And that's something we're thinking about, and something we can put in with, with new code, and something that is not allowed right now. So things like that, trying to start to experiment with what the city looks like. We don't have a lot of land left, so we want to do the right thing by the land when we get there. Other major accomplishments, short-term rentals. We, I, I don't want to talk about short-term rentals anymore. We put in, we debated it a ton, put in a really successful set of rules, going to make one or two minor tweaks, we think, and then we're going to let that thing ride, and hopefully short-term rentals don't take over the city, and we can, we can continue on our merry way. Goals for 2018, completing the Land Development Code project. Summer is kind of slated for when we want to get this done. The way we run, that probably means fall, but I think 2018's probably pretty good, a pretty good shot. The final second draft should be completed in May. That seems, seems optimistic. Public hearing and adoption process, you know, once we actually have a Land Development Code, then you, as the citizens, have to read that, and then we'll have some public hearings, get some ideas of what you guys want to, want to do. The sooner the public starts talking, the less mad we are going to be at you when you tell us to change something. Please, just tell us now. Minor amendments to the community master plan. We looked at actually changing some of the future land use map. There are just some lots that we maybe missed when we did the master plan. There's a couple places we decided to go mixed use. There's also some, some things that are kind of embedded in the, in the code in terms of how we treat, say, property owned by the city, property owned by the BLP, that sort of thing. So we made some amendments, and the idea is, instead of just reviewing this thing once every, you know, generation, we are going to review it on an ongoing basis, so it actually keeps up with, with the culture and the progress. Public transportation is probably the most important issue that this town is going to face in the next five years. This town is going to get harder to drive around. It's kind of easy to walk, but right now, if you look at our two downtown areas, they're linear, so you look at Third Street, you look at Washington Street, they're not dense and squares, so to get from one place to the other, you have to walk a straight line, which is kind of a pain. Getting the bus system to work as a public service and not a social service is going to be very tough culturally. It's going to be tough on the user base, it's going to be tough on the provider base. Getting all that integrated is going to be really difficult. We have to do it. We have to do it. The city is, the amount of people that are coming into this city on a, on a week-to-week basis just for work is increasing. The amount of people that come here because they love coming here and are spending three days on a weekend or a whole week at a short-term rental during the summer is even higher. We can't have them driving around, because it's hard for us to drive around, and we live here. So, public transportation, we got to jump on, and we're going to, we're going to start. Dave's already been banging his head against it as hard as he can, and that's going to be the, you know, that's going to be one of our main projects over the next year, and it's really, it's a five-year deal. Other concerns, short-term rentals, public transportation, public transportation, public transportation. That is the concern. It appears only minor changes, okay, this is more short-term rental stuff. This is, and I think I said this last time, we spent a lot of time last year dealing with how like upper-middle-class Caucasian tourists can spend money to stay over somewhere. That's kind of a concern. People have been talking about homelessness in this city. I'm a little more scared of, on the short-term rental side, I'm a little more scared of the rich people than the poor people in terms of how it changes the city. None of that has any merit compared to the, what we're dealing with on the transportation and the energy levels. We need to get the transportation taken care of, because that's going to change how people work, how people can work, and how we live in the city. That's it.
Thank you, Taylor. Just so you know, we had a work session with the Planning Commission just prior to this meeting, so we kind of, we've all talked what we had to talk about, but perhaps we have more? Is, Commissioners, anybody got a question here? Any want to put Taylor on the spot? Commissioner Frazier?
I won't put you on the spot yet, Taylor, but, you know, there may be some seats open in a couple years if you do feel like moving up and joining Paul. I mean, you'll have a little break-- I mean, you'll have a little break from the planning commission for a while. Maybe you might want to join up, move up, hang out with Paul for a little bit. Planning commission can keep on setting people up here, who knows? But as far as the old hospital and our old city manager was working with, you know, people trying to get zoning for maybe housing in there, there's been everything, there's talk of ripping it down and maybe building more houses in there because they took down a lot of houses to build the hospital. That's a possibility. There's talk of them doing something else, who knows what's going to happen with that? Maybe it's going to be a big crazy house, you know, a place like a local haunted house, place for you to visit. I mean, it's just a big maze. It'd be a cool haunted house for everybody to visit, you know, you never know. Get if people hide in there, spook with you, who knows? But who knows what it could be? I think it may get ripped down, it may not be, who knows what they're going to do with it? We'll find out from DLP when it comes to that point, but I foresee maybe housing, it might just get ripped down, get housing, who knows? But I hope you guys will be on top of that. They're the job for you. Maybe when your time's done, you won't get involved, but maybe you'll find somebody to get involved.
Good job for them.
Care to tell us where chickens belong in the city?
I've got three of them.
You're in violation.
I know. I got them just after we made them illegal. We've had them for about five years. Now that I'm the vice chair, I can say that stuff. I'm a lame ducked. We think that a reasonable amount of agricultural, agriculture should be allowed. A hoop house is going to, you know, hoop house is going to extend the growing season from two and a half weeks to three and a half weeks up here. That'll be great. That seems to be something that doesn't change the face of the neighborhood, lets people kind of do what they want. And we'll see how, we'll see how it goes. I mean, I don't think people should be growing, you know, corn in their, in their front yards up to eight feet, but be able to grow some of your own food. This is a, you know, this community kind of pride, this community prides itself on pretty much everything about this community. This, this community also prides itself a lot on its resilience and that's, that's part of it. So I think we're going to have chickens. Dave, you said rabbits. There'll be, there will be small animal husbandry and plants here, you know, probably by the summer. And it's not worth it. As a chicken owner, I can also tell you and all the citizens, it's cheaper, easier, and cleaner just to buy eggs.
Thank you. We might, we needed to hear that.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank, oh, wait, we got one more. Commissioner Stonehouse has more.
Kip, you know, thank you to the planning commission for all they do. I know I give you a little hard time once in a while, but you guys really do.
That's your job.
That's my job and the work that you do is certainly terrific for the city and no one can fault that. Couple of quick hits though, transportation planning, I think you're spot on with that. Not only do we have to get the bus line, it actually transports customers, but we need to also look at what we do for airports. While that's really a county responsibility, whatever we can do to force the county into doing what it has to do to try and get airlines to actually land there would be extremely helpful. Hospital, I mean, we all know that that belongs to Duke and Duke's going to do with it what they do with it, but we certainly need to be looking ahead for what those ramifications would be. And I think the row house thing would just be, be really great if we were looking to do that. Lastly, remember we've got two power plants that are going away and we got to figure out what happens to the property when they're gone. We Energies, of course, is going to be done by next year according to the EPA and what happens to that property is, is much a mystery at this point. But the BLP Shyras plant goes away too. And I'm told right now that's absolutely redundant and they could tear it down tomorrow once they get done burning down the coal pile. So that has to be dealt with. And it's my understanding that the city of Marquette actually owns the land, though the BLP owns obviously the structure and would certainly be held responsible for any remediation of the land that's necessary. But then that makes the question, what should we do? We being the corporate body with what's left, with the land, the dockage, et cetera. So I would hope the master plan would, would in some fashion address that.
We, we have been working, actually Jen Hill is still here. We've been working with some NMU students. Jen Hill, Tom Tourville from the BLP, and we're, we're trying to get a dialogue together that kind of integrates our planning with their planning. But that's a, that's, that's another tough road to hoe and there's, there's not a lot of people that know how to reclimate coal plants. There's something we can do with it. But getting the conversation going, you know, your, your help as city commissioners would be greatly appreciated and is actually needed to kind of move that. And you're, you're also talking about, this is the BLP, this is like six Finnish electrical engineers that you have to get to talk. It's tough.
Well, I, I think that is a role of the city commission is to step in there and to force that action to happen because it's too important for the city to have a plan in place as rapidly as possible to move that on so we can look at other options for that neighborhood. You know, we did get rid of the old gas works that was down there. We got that gone. Now we've just got to deal with the BLP, but thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Taylor, thank you. Tonight, we have one public hearing. That public hearing concerns a new liquor license application at 717 North Third Street. City clerk, could we please have some information on that, please?
Thank you, Mayor Background. The city has received a local approval notice from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission for a new liquor license for Superior Culture Owner Alex Rowland to be located at 717 North Third Street. Rowland is applying for a license for a microbrewery, a small wine maker, and a wine retasting room. The state requires applicants for a new liquor license to obtain a recommendation from the local legislative body. This application has been reviewed and approved by the city's Community Development Department as well as the Treasury, Police, and Fire Departments. Tonight's public hearing was scheduled during the city commission's February 12th meeting. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation: Concur with request from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission for Alex Rowland. Approve the required resolution and direct the city clerk to sign it. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to open this public hearing. If anyone wishes to address us, this would be the time to do it. You have three minutes. Is there anybody there that would like to address the commission? If you want to take the podium up front?
Yeah, sure.
Just give us name and home address, please.
So, my name is Alex Rowland. I live at 717 North Third Street. I have a residential address above it and a commercial address below, so I live where I work. I started this company in October of 2016. The old Cruisin' Coffee on Wright Street, tiny little kitchen. I'm now have a slightly bigger kitchen, looking to expand, starting to spread bottles and kegs around town at non-alcoholic retail locations right now. But what I'm looking to as I go forward is to not be bound by that half a percent alcohol mark when it comes to my ferments, kind of expand beyond the general beer and wine that we have been in since, you know, way back, but, and basically be looking to explore slightly more alcoholic probiotic beverages as well as ginger beers and wild fermented fruit wines. I had to do all of these licensing through the zoning commission and I'm kind of just trying to group all this together so I can send in this paperwork to the federal government and the state, trying to get approved to start producing alcohol.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address us on this subject matter? Anyone else? Okay, see none, we're going to pull, we're going to close this portion. What? So we are closing the public hearing. Commissioners, we need a motion. Would someone care to make a motion to approve this? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I motion to approve the liquor license application at 717 North Third Street.
Would someone care to support? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Only that looks like it's a good local business trying to grow and we should support it.
Commissioner Reynolds?
I echo Commissioner Stonehouse's comments.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I have received some questions from a resident and that also the same questions were part of the planning commission members when they had this. Will the truck drivers, the delivery drivers actually be parking in the driveway or will they be on the street? I guess I would address that to Alex. I don't know if I can ask him that now. Was the resident's concern that it would be more likely the deliveries would happen in the driveway and not on the street because it is a difficult driveway to navigate and that can be a pretty busy area. It may not matter in the winter or early in the morning, but in the summer with frosty treats right there, a lot of kids running around, big trucks can just be a little more dangerous. So it was just a concern that I thought was something to bring up.
So there goes on a case-to-case basis.
Podium.
Just come to the podium.
Come to the podium.
Thanks, Alex.
So, on a case-to-case basis, depending on the delivery, some of the trucks may or may not be able to navigate into the driveway. So I did have one during the wintertime, there's big old snowbanks and he was, he did have to drop the pallet of glass in the, on Third Street in the front parking spot right in front of my house. And then I basically unloaded that by hand into my shop. In the summertime, it's quite a bit easier because you have a pallet jack and you're able to move it up onto the, into the driveway and whatnot, but you know, with conditions right now, it's not really possible. So I guess what I could try and do is make sure, you know, before winter comes around that I'm fully stocked on things like glass bottles and, and along those lines. And other than that, I don't really have big deliveries. It's, it's glass is what it is. Other than that, all my produce is coming from organic farms like around the area and most of the stuff I'm picking up myself.
Yeah.
So maybe once every couple months, there's a pallet of glass that needs to get moved and I can, you know, try and coordinate that at whatever times are most convenient.
Okay. I appreciate you taking that into consideration. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Who else? Alex, I commend you on starting a new business. I, it's always refreshing to see that. Okay, we need a roll call vote on this because it contains a resolution. So city clerk, if you could do that for us, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Frazier?
Prove.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Shogo?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protom Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes, passes, six zero. Next, we come to the consent agenda. Ms. Brum, you wish to speak to us on this?
Thank you. I didn't realize I was setting a new precedent. I'll try to make it worth your time. Item 5F and item 5G are related. Basically, you've got a big old piece of equipment that has passed its useful life and you've decided that you're not going to try to fix it, you're going to sell it and buy a new big old piece of equipment. And I did the math and I think you got some really good bids and I commend you for publishing the bids in the agenda. And I think you're going to come out in positive $115,000 on this transaction. And I, my math might be off by $2,000 or $3,000. So it's a good transaction for the city and it also leaves you with money that you hadn't planned on having. And my request is that anytime the city comes up with money that it didn't plan on having, that it establishes a fund to repair picnic rocks. And you're going to hear me coming time and time again back to that. This is a good transaction for the city. It seems to be done perfectly well. You're coming out ahead, take that money, put it in a fund for picnic rocks because in six weeks' time, the snow's going to be melted and you're going to need to do something. Thank you for your time and again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak on the consent agenda.
We need a motion. Somebody care to make a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I motion, Your Honor, to approve the consent agenda as written.
Is there a second? Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Just discussion, I think, yes, we might be coming ahead financially on this and believe me, we do sock that money away for other uses and believe me, picnic rocks is a priority, so that's high on our, on our short list, so we're aware of that. Thank you. Any further discussion? I see none. This would be a roll call vote, I believe, because there's also another resolution involved.
Yes.
City clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plord? Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Shogo?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protom Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes, passes, six zero. Next, we move to new business. We have two items tonight on new business. First item is the commission appointment to the Marquette Area Sister Cities Partnership. City clerk, could we please have the background on that?
Thank you, sir. Background, since 1979, the city of Marquette has engaged in sister city programs focused on cultural understanding, international friendships, and the sharing of ideas. The Sister City Advisory Committee was established February 13th, 1989 to advise the city commission on all issues regarding the participation of the city and sister city programs. In 2015, due to the limitations of the city charter and commission policy, the Sister City Advisory Committee had been limited in its ability to recruit members and fundraise for outgoing delegations. These limitations led the advisory committee to recommend the city commission decommission the advisory committee and establish a relationship with the then newly-formed nonprofit Marquette Area Sister City Partnership. As part of that agreement, the city commission voted to appoint or elect the mayor or his/her alternate as the city's voting member of the Marquette Area Sister City Partnership. Former Commissioner Sarah Combenzi was selected to serve in this capacity and the role has gone vacant since her resignation from the city commission. Fiscal effect, none to the city. Recommendation: Appoint or elect the mayor or his alternate as the city's voting member of the Marquette Area Sister City Partnership. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Smith?
I move that we appoint Sarah Reynolds to the Marquette Area Sister City Partnership.
Can we do that now? Okay. Is there a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I second that motion.
Do we have any discussion? Commissioner Smith, anything you want to add? Commissioner Stonehouse, anything you want to add?
I think Commissioner Reynolds would be an outstanding choice.
Commissioner Reynolds, anything?
No, thank you.
Anyone else? See no further discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That passes, six zero. Okay, our second new business item of the evening is to establish the Marquette Public Art Commission and appoint membership. City clerk, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Of note, under the recommendation in the agenda packets, there were not terms listed, so I will read the terms for each of the listed members appointed. Background, at its April 11th, 2016 regular meeting, the city commission made appointments to the public art task force with the objective to define and address existing and future public art in the city. The public art tax, task force met for over a year and created the Marquette Public Art Policy. At its September 25th, 2017 regular meeting, the city commission voted to approve the Marquette Public Art Policy and establish the Marquette Public Art Commission and Public Art Fund as described in the policy. The policy requires that the Marquette Public Art Commission be comprised of seven members, including four members dedicated to art professionals. The Arts and Culture Advisory Committee was charged, was charged with recommending the membership for this commission. To accomplish this, the committee used a scoring matrix split into the four professional positions and the three non-professional positions. Applicants were scored based on four categories, including one, education credentials, two, professional community activities that support, three, personal interest, and four, talents, experience. The Marquette Public Art Commission, as per the adopted policy, will be tasked with developing detailed guidelines that included but are not limited to selection process and criteria for commissioning new work, strategy for implementation and administration, procedures and criteria for donating works of art, de-accession procedures and criteria, community outreach requirements, maintenance guidelines, and proposed placement. These guidelines will shape the city's public art program and ultimately our landscape for years to come. The recommended, recommended membership has followed the usual application and background check process of all other appointed boards and commissions. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation: Establish the Marquette Public Art Commission and appoint the following persons to the committee with staggered terms. Doreen Friend and Christine Granger for terms expiring 2/26/19, Linnea Augustuson, Steve Hughes, and Emily Langtot for terms expiring 2/26/20, and Maureen Tyrell and Tracy Wascom for terms expiring 2/26/21. for terms expiring 2/26/21. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I will motion to establish the Marquette Public Art Commission and to appoint the following persons to the committee with staggered terms. Doreen Friend and Christine Granger for terms expiring on 2/26/19, Linnea Augustuson, Steve, Stephen Hughes, and Emily Lancelot for terms exposing, uh, February 26th of 20, in other words, 2020, and Maureen Tyrell and Tracy Wascom for terms expiring on February 26th of 2021.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Discussion, any? Commissioner Stonehouse?
This is really a stellar group of people, and I think they're going to serve us extremely well in, in that position. So thank you all for volunteering to do it, and I know you're going to, uh, have some good work cut out for you. Thank you.
Commissioner Frazier?
I think it's great we got a coach people that know about art and love art and love to see more art in the community.
Thank you. See no further discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? That carries six zero. Next, we come to our last public comment of the evening. Again, it's chance for resident citizens to address the commission. You've got three minutes. I'm an open public comment. Does anybody wish to address the commission at this point? At the front podium, we need name and home address. Anybody else that want to discuss anything? Anybody? Anybody? See no, we're going to close public comment. We're going to move to comments from the commission. We are going to start with Commissioner Stonehouse tonight. Sorry.
It's a short meeting, but it really was an important one, because I want you to think about this. It was the Planning Commission that did a work session for us before this meeting, about an hour and a half's worth. Uh, their assistant chair, the vice chair, gave a great presentation to us of everything that Planning Commission is working on. But what you have to think about is all of the good things that'll be happening in the city in the future are getting the foundation laid by that Planning Commission today, and this year, and next year. As they chew through it and put the foundations down, we now have what we need to do to build the community as, the city as we move forward. So you really saw an awful lot, and if you paid attention, you, you heard about, um, the, the transportation links that need to be provided, you heard about, we've got to look at what we're going to do with that hospital, because what we're going to do, what the reaction would be, what the potential would be for how that, that best can work for the city. Uh, you learned a lot about land development code and how that's going to make development easier in the city, and the signage ordinances that will be improving those things. That's important stuff, and you just got a window into the future of what's going to be happening with the city of Marquette. So, short meeting, but good meeting. Let me leave you with one little tidbit. Uh, on March 6th, at 7:30, uh, at the Ordock Brewing Company, the Maritime Museum will be putting on a small program that will be talking about the old lifesaving service on the Great Lakes. Their history, particularly though, at Marquette. So if you want to learn more about Lighthouse Park and more about what that little white building was all about and went on doing for a good 110 years, go on down and, and take that, take that session, because it's, again, public session. I think they're asking for a few bucks donation, and they're calling it Maritime History on Tap, but you're going to learn more about your new park than I think you would have learned anywhere else. Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reynolds?
Well, the only comments I have tonight, um, so last week, or I believe it was last week, I met with Doug Russell from Room at the Inn, and he's looking forward in the future, um, of looking, coming to the city, and I think he's going to be coming soon to ask for, he's going to be going out for grant funding for future shelter usage, because I know that homelessness in the city of Marquette is in interest of everyone's. Um, so he's going to be looking for a letter of support from the city, so just put that on your minds of commissioners that he's going to be coming forward and asking that of us. Um, the only other thing is, um, Phil Nema Stowe, obviously. We lost a great person this weekend. Um, in my time here, he was only the second person to get two honorary citizens award, awards ever in the city, and one of them was during, well, our tenure. Um, and I'm just glad, and I wanted to thank Manna again, to be able to have that opportunity to get that statue up before, you know, his passing, so, and that is all this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you. I just want to kind of piggyback on what Commissioner Stonehouse was, was going after there. To see the, uh, number of volunteers that were either put in place on, uh, a couple different committees, or the ad hoc committee, uh, the arts and culture establishment tonight, that's, that's, that's the stuff right there that really pumps me up. I'm really excited. I know, pumps me up, right. But, um, that's stuff that really gets me excited to think that we're engaging with each other in this community, and that we're really pushing together as a unit, um, to make us a better community. So this is, this is the, this is the stuff that I hope continues. I'd like to see every slot vacancy filled on the, uh, on the committees that we have throughout the city. Um, I'm going to do my best to visit each one of those as time moves on and, and kind of learn more about them if I don't, haven't had the opportunity already. But, um, keep it up, and, and, you know, if you have somebody that's interested in something, you think they might be a good fit for it, push them and encourage them in that direction, because that's the stuff that we need to keep, uh, to keep these, uh, these, these groups fresh and, uh, and energized. So, thank you for all your, uh, volunteer hours. There's thousands and thousands of them out there, and, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
I'd like to thank Commissioner Smith and Mr. Schlegel for joining the committee, because ever since both of you have joined the committee, our meetings have been shorter. I don't know what you guys, you guys must have a good relationship with Mike or something, but our meetings have been short. I'd love it, except for when it comes to city, you'll learn this summer that our meetings are not as short when it comes to budget, stuff like that, but maybe you'll work your magic and have our meeting short this summer again, who knows? But, I mean, I think the, everything's been growing in the city, and we got a lot of stuff going on. We got, you know, hospital moving around, that's going to be a long process. I mean, they're not going to open up overnight. It's going to take a long process, moving back and forth. And then we got, you know, like the one power plant closed and the other power plant may close. Maybe Mr. Stonehouse could work with Sherwood's plant closing, he could make it a cruise ship dock. Who knows? I mean, there's all possibilities everywhere. You know, the, the mines talk about possibly opening up again, that's, people would ask why we're not, we're in favor, but there's nothing to do with us, the state policy, and it's the mine to do something like that. I mean, that, that's their decision, not ours. And, and I think everything's good, and it says a lot sunnier now, so maybe we're, winter's finally calming down, and we'll, we see the spring sooner later, but, you know, the city's working on trying to get grants, you know, people have asked about Picnic Rocks along the lakeshore. The city's looking at grants for everything, and they're trying to get grants for fixed stuff, and they're going to wait till summer, see what the lake level, supposed to, the lake level's supposed to go up again a little bit. So I think it's concerned about is how to do it right and make sure it's done right. We don't want to rush it into anything. That's why we just let it sit there and wait till summer, not rush around anything, do everything right.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
There's a lot of exciting things going on in the city right now. One thing I was, I was really happy to see in the consent agenda was this Coaster Water Trail Improvements Grant that we received as a city. Um, it was a matching grant. We got $96,000, and it's for things like the water trail, um, information, the kayak storage, and handicap accessibility for kayakers and water sports. So, looking forward to see all the other interesting things that come along, but I love seeing things like that coming into the city. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. I've got a couple things. First being, the question was brought up about are we going to, uh, send a resolution of endorsement of the Empire Mine to reopen it, bring back jobs to the, uh, Marquette County? Uh, the Mayor Protem, Stonehouse, and myself were actually at that meeting. Oh, actually, no, it was the city manager, right?
Yep.
The three of us were there, and we heard the head of Cliffs asked for support from, uh, Marquette County to reopen the mine. Um, as we left, we knew that we would at some point have to, uh, get on that bandwagon and, and do a letter of resolution of support. Uh, we are, we held off because it really is, the county has first dibs on this because it's a county thing. Uh, we were waiting to see if they were going to send in a, a letter of resolution supporting this, and if they wanted us to just sign on to it, or if they wanted us to send it in separately. So I believe maybe the city manager will take this, uh, he's been in conversation with, um, Mr. Urbish at the county, and, uh, what we're going to do with that, I'm not sure, but he'll let us know. But we are intending to support, we do definitely want to see the Empire Mine reopen. Uh, it's a kind of a long shot, but, uh, you never know. It would be just great for the area, great for the county, great for the UP, but we want that to happen. Tonight, we had 10 volunteers come forward, and it's just refreshing to see that. Any city, if it's going to be a good city, Marquette's a good city, we got things going on, you got to have volunteers. Any city cannot run unless it has volunteers, so we hope they keep coming. We have, I think, 20 committees and boards and authorities, and, um, it's all volunteer, and, uh, there's people come and go, and we need, we always need volunteers, and it's, it's a good way to spend your time and give back to the city. So please consider volunteering your time. Lastly, I'd like to say something about Phil. Phil, of course, is the icon of the city, Phil Nema Stowe. Um, I owned 20, well, for 20 years, I owned a pharmacy on Third Street. When I bought the store, it had windows, giant windows on it, so of course, Phil, Phil contacted me right away. Phil was a slick businessman, don't kid yourself, he knew what he was doing. And, yeah, he wanted to, he wanted to wash my windows, and so I said, yeah, why not? You can't say no to the guy. He was just a, uh, easygoing guy to get along with, and, uh, he'd wash the windows, he'd come in, we'd have, we'd talk. He told me his, you know, things in his life, and, uh, an interesting guy. He would talk to anybody. He was, he was always dressed up, he always wore a tie. This guy washed windows, he always wore a tie. I mean, he was just an impressive guy. He was happy with himself. He wasn't a rich man, but, you know, he, he was happy with what he was doing. Uh, anybody he talked to, they'd feel comfortable, and he would talk to anybody, you know, he never felt like he couldn't match up with anybody. The last story about him is, I find this interesting. Uh, he was in the store one day, and, uh, it was midsummer, and you know how when, when grandparents and parents come in, and they got pictures of their kids, they pull out their wallet, and they show you pictures of the kids, they're on their iPhone, they show pictures of their kids or grandchildren? Phil pulls out pictures of his plants up there in the pocket park, and he was so proud of them. I mean, he showed me, and he, he had names for them. So I, I, you know, the guy really liked what he did. Now, I mean, how many people could be, you know, happy with, you know, simple things in life, and that was Phil. He, he led a good life. Uh, I don't think anybody disliked him. How could they? He was just too nice a guy. So we're going to miss the guy, you know, he's not going to be downtown anymore, but, you know, guys like him don't come along very often, so hope he, uh, he's in a better place. City Manager, are you going to talk a little bit about the Empire Mine resolution and rebuilding Picnic Rocks?
I got about 40 minutes worth of stuff. Okay, here. No. Yes, um, I have a resolution on my desk as we speak. The county passed a resolution at their last meeting, and we can mimic theirs, and I'll prepare that for a future meeting. Uh, with regard to Picnic Rocks, uh, you've seen my emails, I hope to be able to move some money around in our capital improvement plan, uh, that will shift some money from a project that I believe we don't need anymore to, uh, help with Sherwood's Park as well as, uh, the Lighthouse Park. So, work will be done in order to get the park, Sherwood's Park, open for the summer. It will not be completely done. Um, we're looking at more of a short-term fix until we can take some time to do a serious analysis of how we can protect it from future storms. So, uh, we will, or do plan on having it open, probably reconfiguring it somewhat. It'll be a little bit different, look different, but it'll be still open to the public. And lastly, just for the public's benefit, in case you missed it, at the, uh, Planning Commission work session, uh, the city commission will be re, uh, addressing some changes to